I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Notice this meeting. Notice this meeting has been adjourned on due date for the present and all members of the council. Fail to do these general standing in the vast history of the year. All proceedings are after the vote on this committee's self-conviction. This meeting is being convened in accordance with the open meetings act. Copy of the open meeting. O.C. in the southeast of the council. Any person wishing to address the council to do so by standing. Recognize, please go to the podium, please sign your signing sheet located on the podium. It's a team organization and for the person you represent before you begin to speak. Thank you. Hold call.
Block absent. De Pierre.
Here.
Holstein. Crasky.
Here.
Laughlin. Four yes, one absent. Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, maybe I will, yeah. You know how to, no, it's over here. With lighting? Okay. So, tonight I'm gonna go over our fiscal year 2025, 2026 proposed budget statement. So I'm gonna go through some past legislation to see where we've gotten to today as the last five years. There's been changes to how the budget works in Nebraska. So, um, L.B. one forty-eight was approved by the governor in 2020. And that legislation required that the hearing be held separately from any regular scheduled meeting, which is what we're having prior to the, to the other regular meeting. Three copies of the proposed budget statement need to be available to the public, which are on the table there by the, by the press if anybody wants to grab one and look at as we go through. Then a presentation outlining the key provisions must be made during this hearing, which is what I'm getting ready to do. And any member of the public will be allowed to address the governing body at the hearing and be given a reasonable amount of time to do so, which is why the second meeting starts immediately following this. There's no, you can't stop somebody from addressing the council for as long as they went to about the budget. And then in 2021, L.B. six forty-four was passed. Um, this is where the county, city, school district, or community college, if they increase their property tax request by more than two percent, real growth percentage, they're required to participate in a joint public hearing. That legislation has been changed and the community colleges are no longer included in that requirement. It's just the county, city, and school districts. And that is the joint public hearing that we had last Thursday night that we participated in. Uh, back when this legislation was adopted, the joint public hearing needed to be held between September seventeenth and prior to September twenty-ninth. And then each political subdivision needed to designate a representative to give a presentation on behalf of the political subdivision. Um, and then in 2023, L.B. seven twenty-seven was adopted. And that changed the dates of the joint public hearings and thus they are now held between September fourteenth and the twenty-third. And then each political subdivision must have a link on the website showing what the proposed budget is. And that legislation has actually been changed as well and it's foreseeable. Well, it's still required to do it, but based on the population of your county, not every county. And I actually looked up each county is not required to have it based on our population, but the city is. So, that's probably why we were looking for that and couldn't find it. And then this also changed that the one elected official must attend the joint public hearing. Um, that was not a requirement prior to 2023. And then the elected official may be the designated rep. And then they've also made a statement in statute that the presence of a quorum at the joint public hearing does not constitute a meet, constitute a meeting for open meetings act purposes. It's just a hearing. And then the more recent legislation. Turn. Is L.B. thirty-four, which was approved by the governor in 2024. And that established the Property Tax Growth Limitation Act, which is what replaces statute, the lid on restrictive funds. If you've been around a while, you remember the, how that's, that's one of the major restrictions that government had. And they changed that to the Property Tax Growth Limitation Act. And that also creates the property tax request authority. And then the final legislation, which was just approved in June of 2025, is L.B. six forty-seven and it addresses calculation problems that they approved in L.B. thirty-four. And I'm not gonna go through this. We'll go through how that's all calculated as I get further into the, into the budget. And also the inflation percentage is determined by the auditor of public accounts by their formula that I didn't wanna bore you with. So, this is the start, um, of the dispersments in our budget. So this is the, we have to show three years worth of data to the government, to the state. So this is a twenty-three, twenty-four actual dispersment. And as you can see, like this is like all the different funds of the city on the left-hand column there. And then we have to divide each fund out by operating expense, capital improvements, other capital outlay, debt service, other or transfer stuff, then with total cost. So you can see our twenty-three, twenty-four dispersment, um, actual worth thirteen million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. The next slide shows the twenty-four, twenty-five, and they call it actual estimated because that's the current fiscal year we're in. It's gonna be ending next week. So we have to just take what the actual is and what we, what we estimate is gonna be at the end of the fiscal year. And it's just got all the same fund categories over on the left-hand side. And you know, the columns now, you know, between the operating expenses are all the same for all of the, all of the dispersment categories. So we're estimating that the current fiscal year is gonna end at fourteen million, three hundred and four thousand, twenty-six dollars and forty-three cents. The next slide is our proposed, um, adopted budget. It's not adopted until obviously you make the motion to adopt it. So this is our proposed, um, and it's twenty-eight million is the total. And as you can see, the capital improvements is the category of that it almost doubles our total dispersments because of the wastewater and water, um, capital expenditures that we have in the budget. Do we have any questions so far?
To be clear on the capital improvement, those expenditures.
Correct. Yes. Okay. So now we're gonna go on to the, the limits in our budget. So two of the limits that we've been required to comply with, um, in the past, it was the lid on restricted funds limit and the levy limit, which were both approved in nineteen ninety-eight. So we've been operating on those same two limits for a lot of years. The lid limit is no longer applicable to cities, but the levy limit does remain in effect. So here we have the, I turn. The prior lid computation form is replaced with the property tax request authority computation form. And then the property tax request authority supporting schedules, there's three schedules that make up those supporting schedules. Schedule one is the calculation of unused property tax authority carryforward. Schedule two is declared emergency exception certification. Schedule three is a description of public safety services exceptions. So. So this is the start of our new, um, property tax request authority computation. So it starts at what's last, the prior year property tax request, which is one million, five hundred and forty-one thousand. And if we had any, um, if we were utilizing any of the prior year exceptions, they would go here. Obviously, there were no exceptions prior year because this is a brand-new form. So our preliminary property tax request authority is the one million, five hundred and forty-one thousand. But here's where it gets a little bit confusing because this, and this is on page eight of the state budget document. If you're following along, um, in the, in the actual document. So then the top of the, of the next part of this form is the property taxes levied per the Department of Revenue. So the property taxes that the Department of Revenue says we levied is not what was on our state budget document last year. And I, I did call the, the state auditor's office and he said, that's just gonna be rounded it up a little bit. I think they used management math maybe, but it increased. And, and, and I went, this was kinda hard for me to, to say. He's the first to say that. Um, anyway, it's the, the Department of Revenue says that our levy was actually three hundred dollars. It's close, three hundred dollars higher than what is on our state budget document from last year. So they just took the levis and calculated that out. So, um, this, and I apologize, this is very hard to see, but I couldn't make it a whole lot easier. So this here is our growth percentage per county assessor. Thus calculated by our twenty-twenty-five growth value, which is fourteen million, seven hundred thousand. You divide that by last year's total valuation. So our growth percentage is three point two six percent. And then, and the inflation percentage that we talked about earlier, that's just for every government entity. That's just set by the, the auditor of public accounts and they decided that it was five point one seven percent for every, for every entity. So the increase due to growth is fifty thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. And our increase due to inflation is seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. So here is where if we had any exceptions that we were utilizing, we would have them here. And we do, we did utilize, um, in support of an interlocal agreement relating to public safety, we utilized a hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. And that is relating back to our interlocal with county for the EMS services. Okay? So then our total exceptions and then that, that subtracts out. So our property tax request authority, which is the very bottom, right? Those numbers right there, and that's one million, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. I'm gonna stop there. Any questions? I don't wanna go. It's not any time to give questions. That's the authority. That's the request authority. A little different than. So this is schedule one, the calculation unused property tax request authority carryforward. So this, this dollar amount is just strictly given to us by Department of Revenue. They said they took last year's, um, tax asking times five percent. So that's what they just decided. It's in statute. They didn't just decide it. Statute says it's five percent of your prior year, um, tax asking.
This is one hundred and fifty.
Okay, so schedule two relates to declared emergency. That does not affect this. So that's just all left blank as well as schedule three, which is description of public safety services. So that's. No, that's based on an interlocal and it's different. And this is actually, counting it here is not double dipping, but it would be worse off for us in the future if we counted here rather than in. Yeah? Okay, so here is the levy limit form. So this is probably a little more familiar to a lot of you. So I'm gonna start at the bottom here. So our, the levy limit is forty-five cents. And then you can have up to five cents for interlocal agreements. So we actually have like one million, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars in our interlocal agreement. We easily get up five cents, but we could have fifty cent levy. But we are obviously have a thirty-eight cent levy based on evaluation at our property. Does that make sense to everybody? I'll leave it there for a second. It looks like they're looking at it very intently down there. Okay. Okay. So now we're gonna get into the allowable growth percentage computation form. So that takes your, your prior year total property tax request. And every, um, every government entity gets an automatic two percent base limitation percentage. You've seen that in the lid restructuring in the pockets, it's the same premise of two percent. But then the real growth percentage is they take the twenty-twenty-five growth value percentage. That number there is just a number that the assessor gives us. You divide that by the prior year valuation. So we get three point two six as our allowable growth percentage increase. So our total is five point two six percent when you add that to the base limitation. So our allowable dollar amount increase is eighty-one thousand, oh gosh, eighty-nine dollars and thirty cents. So this number here, um, on line six, that's the total property tax request that we could have without needing to attend the joint public hearing. But this is what our property tax request is down here on line seven. So that's why we have this keep notice here. These allow the growth percentage. You must complete the post-grad notification requirements and participate in the joint public hearing. Right. Yep. That won't make sense? Okay. So the next slide is our revenue and cash balance. So these cash balances, um, at the top, the debt, cash balances, investments, this, these, this, and this column, I'll need to tie back to our audit, that the state auditor's office does check those. Um, and so then we just have the federal receipts and all the receipts are listed out. The, you know, big one here is local receipts other. That's kind of where all of our, everything that's not listed somewhere else falls in there. So this is the, so this is the twenty-twenty-three, this is our act request made it for the current fiscal year. And this is our proposed budget in the, in the right-hand column. And that has the total dispersments of twenty-eight million, like you saw in that statement. Yeah? Right. That is correct. And, um, so, you know, I didn't include this page of the budget in the spread, on the spreadsheet. But we have to show our water and sewer as funds that we, as what? Because you know, you're only allowed fifty percent of your budget expenditures in cash reserve. So, so we have to show what our water and sewer balances are gonna be, get below the cash reserve fifty percent. Um, that's a very good question. Yeah, it is. It's page two A. So. Total cash. Yeah, so, so. You have your, that one. There you go. Okay, so our enterprise funds, cash reserves balance estimated is two point five million. And so the remaining cash reserve is five point nine million. And that is on page two A of the budget document, which is a guy that remaining cash reserve of forty-four percent. After take out the enterprise. Right. Well, that's not cash reserve because we don't have that. This is just cash in the bank. That's all.
Right.
That, okay, yes, it is. Yes. Okay? Any other questions on that? Yes, you have, yeah. Okay, so. So this is our, um, notice that for the, the budget hearing and budget summary that was published, I think, ten years on September seventeenth. Thank you, Jeff. And then I added this. I'm not gonna go through each one of these, um, items. But this is the items required to tell to the public at the joint public hearing and different items that Steve went through at the meeting last Thursday night at the NACO building. Do we have any questions? With the cute graphic up this here? No?
Well.
What's that?
Forty years. We've made a budget. Some years before. We're doing roughly, they impose, you know, approaching, I don't know. Sometimes we're just, like, impressed you. Playing on people. The audience is.
It seems to.
Their, their place. Their lobby.
Thank you. My pleasure. Summer. Nothing stayed up till.
What's this, I mean, it don't count? Point. And, you know, you just don't know. You know, we, we have a line that, so with this operation, could, could take that out. We'd add to, uh, in, in major disaster, so. You know, there's a rejector script.
They were stuck on the last slide.
We're fortunate that where the council is, it's pretty, it's about making it work. It'd be very, very easy to say, I'm not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take any increase regularly. Or using up that, that country in finance, or we don't have to go, well. The difference is, like, five. Yeah. It's not a, you know, it's. A limitless. Fun. Limits is on that. Move is good for. Yeah, it's worth discussing. I think we can pull back more.
Yeah.
Cities.
And we do have budgeted use of cash reserves built into the budget as well. My projectors.
Speaking of parks, they don't know. But then, we've been in special. I would want. Any other questions? I don't know. You can also. Oh, I do. Or. Scary. It's been against the law, and that would already present. And one of us, and the taxpayers could come up with that, too, but I don't think. And so I think it's just important to know that we're not asking for everything. We've done it a lot. Very good point. You know, we're, we're naming our program, uh, there's a lot of capitalist spending. There wasn't even, uh, for the burden. And we're, uh, at the summit, we're listening to the departments. Uh, so in November, we're, uh, other meetings. What we can do to get rid of, or.
I've taken power to that. That's better. Sorry. Protector's not working.
You guys see? Blue screen's on.
No, that's not what's on my screen, though. It's stuck on the last slide of PowerPoint. If I close. It was a nice.
Any other? Don't count. If not, we'll. Seventy, twenty-nine. What did it take? Somebody? We have motion by council. My council is adjourned. I'm prepared. Just go, definitely note.
Great, thank you. Four yes, one absent?
We're adjourned. We're gonna get running to the, uh, regular meeting.
No. Yeah?
You go call.
Block absent. But absent Dupierre Holstein Kraski Laughlin.
Yeah. Notice. Notice. Availability. All proceedings. Any of these. Talking of these. Enterprise and witnesses address down and may do so by feeling they are recognized, leave their podium. Please sign the signing seat looking down the podium and state your name and your organ statement. First thing you represent is for you to be. Thank you. Uh, that role. We have a motion about.
Oh, heck.
Second by. He tells them.
Well, I didn't.
Counselor, the three votes.
For yes, one absent?
All right, we have. We're preparing them. Twenty twenty-five.
Two something. Yeah. We had.
Oh.
Yeah.
My bad.
Yep.
Uh, consent agenda. We have a minute to go. With me, tell. Camera nine twenty-two five, we have minutes of ready meeting held on September nine twenty-two five. Have claims, we have renewal of master contract on license. Be with folks. Uh, appointment to community development authority. Keep proud. From me. Motion by council. This is. No questions? That's a good place.
For yes, one absent?
Motion third. In their public forum, we have the MPTV, well, excuse us. Uh, no, never mind. Uh, in the public forum, we have the MPTV annual interview for Brian.
Good job.
Thank you. Like if this kind of is wrapped up, uh, before JBD eight. As they deal with you, you are before you experience with that, it goes through the plant, which I the back and there's the one who is better running for you. Ready for some more smog there. The back is part of the power line there, but it's not short enough for the NCD. It transferred back to the board, so we can work for it. There's a ninety-four hundred customers, that's the retail business. How many were served wholesale around five hundred fifty thousand? Eighty-four million percent of it was served with eighty-one million. Those are the retail communities like City of Oklahoma. For example. Two thousand, they're going to corporate supply, so that's where called wholesale and retail of Lloyd's fifty-three seventy-seven, the line over San Francisco. Twenty-eight or pre-subject to view things, uh, and that's stuff there with very first generated facilities, we just briefly talked about our future generation. Um, our plan down the road here is southern with still three seventies, early eighties. Um, great plan, we continue to operate that as the lower car. Uh, it's actually the largest power plant in the state of Nebraska in the world. And we continue to operate that as long as environmentally. Well, we can make that as clean as we can and do. But we will continue to operate as long as that's a great facility for down the road here. That was built in the late seventies, early eighties, and then the facility was built within the after, so now it's two thousand and five. We'll build from beginning to there. And we don't go sense because we had excess to find it. Most of you are probably aware, they pushed during the last probably when the IR state built in the road took place with a lot of new ring up, there's a lot of paralysis, hybrid there. A lot of large windows coming in at the state. And I cut them down with a new registration. Uh, so what we're seeing now are purely data. You know, the AI type data centers, there are a few, just as an example. Uh, the city level on the vehicle, about fifteen megawatt total at a peak. There's an every day, the last Thursday, maybe a call frame for the incident. Dylan wants to build a data center. They first find it with them. Wayne, I'm like, well, he's already optioned the property. He's only worth that. And he said, we'd like to, we started at one zero watt. So that is almost the same size all the generation has had so. That's thirteen hundred megawatt, same one as a thousand. Um, are they real projects? I'm not sure, they had a call within the day. Uh, they've already optioned property, so they're basically trying to figure out the next footprint for the next Google facility. So that's the large projects, the worst thing that we're having to build this generation for. Uh, we are building new generation, the first front of that is going to be a town station. That's called Princeton Road, it'll be six hundred and ninety-four megawatt. Uh, it'll be reciprocating engines that are dual dual paneling to less than turbine. And that could be operational June of twenty twenty-nine. That'll be the new generation we built since two thousand and five. Following up with that, uh, we've already ordered the turbine for the next truck, which will be twenty thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two. And that would be at our DAF's power station in South of Allen. So again, the loads are getting larger and we want to make sure that we have adequate power to be able to deliver. Hey, do I ask question of how much is this renewable? We are still doing all base loads, so this next I'm going to say fifteen hundred megawatts, twenty-five hundred megawatts is all natural gas or operating fuel. Fuel load. And we need base load energy, we need to settle it versus the wind turbines and the solar. That's great for, you know, we all backfill, but we still need that base energy for the state. And the other one I'd appreciate, that's a small modular reactor. Not sure if all of you follow that movement, but they they are being resigned, there is one being built for Miami, probably finding, so still good, trying to put that together. And typically, that's the best way to get technology, certainly it's private funding. Um, France, those kind of things, it's kind of hard to come by, so we'll see how that works out, but we already have like an about sixteen, we need the rest of them. Um, we met with probably ten of those rounds two already. Uh, to this step, they're interested in having a small modular reactor. Basically where we're looking at some of those where we already have interest. So we'll make, uh, we'll be down to two in twenty twenty-six to the four. And then we'll decide at that point in time if we go through with the initial um site rating, which is a two-year process. So again, they're extremely expensive right now for a one hour. But we don't anticipate until that price becomes more competitive, that that would be the choice of moving. Uh, we are re-licensing our current uh facility. It's uh constant in the realm of the city. Um, that's eight hundred megawatts today, we plan on them, we re-licensing, we can't stop during. Uh, our current life is expired in twenty thirty-four. Um, we would like to get a twenty year extension. We're trying to use our assets that we already, our customers have invested in and we build on that, but building and generating. Down to the rankings down below it. You you probably don't know this, because everything has been placing with like everything has skyrocketed. Your your intubating bill from the ten years prior to last year, we had no raise this thing yet. That's that's uncertain, because you know, the city and the government, how much can you take an increase because of health insurance, you know, material costs and all those things. Ways going up, but we were able to take what we have and be able to maximize our infrastructure and its technology incentives, there's no meter review. Um, that's certainly helps reduce staffing, so a lot of that has helped that ten-year window, in twenty twenty-five, we did ask for the three percent increase. And we anticipate the board will probably approve a three percent increase for twenty twenty-six. When we don't have that approved, and that's what we anticipate, we fill the room, we'll pay for the board director. And anticipate that. Nothing on that, I'll go over to the financial side of it, look over. For the part of left-hand side, a briefly bottom-up contract, so if you have a professional operating team, the device that was signed in two thousand nineteen, that is a twenty-five year contract, so that contract runs through twenty forty-four. Within that contract, the agreement is that we will collect from the company or commit to the city twelve percent of the revenue from all of your accounts. So not just the city limited account, but you're on the fringe area also, so there's area outside of the city that also collects. So that twelve percent of that revenue in twenty twenty four was uh eight hundred and twenty-two thousand nine sixteen. In addition to that, the sales factor is eighty-five thousand dollars. So that's the piece that you receive to allow us to operate your system. Um, in addition to that, um, we maintain one hundred percent of it, we have all the investments are made from our our budgets, we're not actually bringing additional. All the upgrades and because of the low growth, it might not seem huge, but uh, we have been seeing the gradual low growth in the past twenty years. It's always been less than a couple of percent. You do see two sides of Oklahoma, electric load growing a little larger than that, the north side. We think about a few percent growth now, and the south side receiving about a four percent. So and keep up with that, when we're replacing transformers in twenty twenty-seven into north substation, I'm glad it's there at home. And in twenty thirty, we have budgeted for a new substation south of Oklahoma. Uh, that's on the low voltage sites, but that would be the seventy-two hundred volt, we also anticipate in twenty thirty-four we change that to two hundred and thirty thousand volts, or like high voltage substation. So um, we have a lot of investments on transformation, going forward, we're going to that we'll take care of. Uh, if you go there again for the right kind of follow the whole around side, you grow your revenue tax, that's by state statute, you collect an additional five percent which is committed to the county. And then the county submits that back out to the PACM, the process of counting. Uh, LED lighting programs, energy efficiency. In twenty forty, we paid that over fifty-seven thousand dollars back to the citizens of Oklahoma. In the form of incentive, for instance, here in the Pia, I believe you said LED lighting several years ago, so we'll help the Pia. Um, and cementary things, and we need that, it's a great investment to build. Uh, we've been working with American Community, one of their largest companies here. Uh, to be able to help them do some additional land, you guys can now facility. And they cover everything from light and heating, they have a lot of conversion coming up for gas, electric, heat pumps, because it's becoming extremely efficient. Um, even the electric lawn mower, you know, there's some of the battery operated facilities now that are trying to hit the hole. And then the down at the bottom, I'm assuming solar location. Um, even though it was a little controversial to build wings when it went through, it's a great asset. Uh, anybody that was able to purchase the our stadium as a substantial savings, to think about it when when it was built, uh, the savings wasn't around five days, it's never changed with the time of the radio increase, and I'd like to say that ever, but we will have it. That never seemed for the cost of that solar energy for thirty years, you know, it gets in hot every day. So you'll continue to see that credit get larger, essentially because different portion of your other part of the construction, your generation is going to go up, that never goes up. So that's been a great, a great statistic for the community. And the city has. Wanting to. It was it was front whatever new which left, sort of having it back to this. No, we don't have one. And it's yeah, it's already subscribed, so we can't take on a new town, so probably we do have thirty-three every year that folks will move out. And then they'll become available, so we do have waiting list. For those who might take this here. Uh, a couple of things, if, you know, on a positive side, as you know, with building, the excitement that's around it. Um, you know, you're going to see additional revenue for businesses like that, uh, in addition to all the buildings that you have up north. Uh, and even the old Dollar Generals store, you know, once we get through model out there, but sometimes you try taking them and they haven't been, it's been a warehouse for fifteen years. So it's a young, there are twenty, thirty new employees out there and they're remarkable buildings. A lot of new loans there are coming in, some there just taken, but they're currently there. Um, some of the more positive things from port route, uh, we were just in the last two weeks. We're ranked number one in the country as the most reliable facility in the US. And I know occasionally if somebody says, well, my life is kind of boring, well, if that ever happens, we they blink less than anybody else. Um, we're not. You have better stories. And part of that's depending on the use of vacuum system. Don't go back in the system, it's just like water to sewer and, you know. And eventually they increasing, doing full testing. But you know, we have revenue maintenance, so. Uh, and then, yeah, some of the other things are yeah, probably more trivial, I think a few, but you know, every day we have free period, and we cover a lot of everything, it's kind of facilities uh, in the areas, so we have first in the settlement, we have working areas, we have stuff, certainly we have a lot of doing amazing non-dog, but here today, we're very excited to help them. So it's pretty, if we have storms, and you probably have noticed in the past, we've been raining pretty strong over the state. And we have underdogs technicians. They're not the long office, so it was probably like five years ago, we consolidated and built the Bombard's Building, which is for the workforce. We have about thirty employees in there, we have our transmission, so on, so thirteen groups, so we can maintain things that are great. So questions? Keep the lights on. You're about to. You've done a good job. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Hey, moving on, people's service. Update, please mic to there.
Hopefully I've received a request, you might have reported to all kind of him. Kind of worry with me. Uh, first thing is, uh, at the wastewater plant, um, last month I touched on we're out of compliance because of the sales. And um, we have increased that, or we have improved that dramatically, we're selling out half the over one point zero, we are on three point four now, but we've gone from eleven to three point four uh, in the last three weeks, um, getting with the state all the way through it, um, working with them to some of the social incidents that we don't have to spend money. Thank you. Uh, we did clean out one, clarify, completely removed all of them. And now we're doing process control throughout the plant, trying to strategically figure out where we can make a difference, recirculate and do certain things to make the plant work. Because the thing that it'll be our biggest thing right now, it's not working. That spins around. And I did cascade water over media with the octadiam, which is, and it was clear that that's part of our national nation process, that's not happening. Um, so we have to make do with whatever we have there to try to get that to increase without that. Um, so it makes it a little more difficult to get down to the point one that we're supposed to be at. Uh, but we are currently now doing process control and figure out how we can recirculate and move up and move it around within the plant to re-treat it again, so hopefully uh, get that a more down, the good news is after October, the warning will throw back up to four point five, um, the average of the max eleven point five, we have every quarter. And um, so we continue to uh, to make improvements, I hope to see that dominant in that couple, in that couple weeks to be with the permit before we raise that limit, because once we raise that limit, we're going to be where we can Before we raise that limit, because once we raise that limit, we're going to be where we can. But historically, it does happen during the year. And this is kind of why we're, we're active, if you think the morning limits in the past, and they do that, that oxidation dish. Um, which obviously did help dramatically, but when you have a, okay, we're at a one point oh, that's, that's low, I mean, that pays. In, everything has to work. And currently, we are waiting for the fines to get those fix, fix, fix. Uh, we have triple coverage to make. They're a huge piece of that, and they're the huge piece of the money that we are waiting for from the government to get those things. Uh, once again, the, you know, state of the nation is working well with it. My, my staff is doing wonderful, talking, doing everything they can to keep. Looking through the processes, showing the pictures, showing what we're doing. Um, I see no negative. From energy coming from the, uh, coming from the state with the current situation now, that we're in, waiting for the fines and also making some improvements that everybody made just in last year. So that's all doing this. Uh, we are having a little bit of trouble with the boilers. Uh, we are getting them repaired currently. Um, to get them up and running before the whole weather, sorry, we don't need it, um, because we keep everything warm. Um. On the water side, once again, it's appropriate, but the skating system does take itself easily. And uh, we are just continuing to work and keep it going. So, um, hopefully we can get that one back and get all that replaced. But then the next year.
I'm going to report that legally approved that. But. Yes, I see that.
We got a one. We have the four hundred and twelve for David. It's a big dollar.
Long time waiting on that.
May yearly. December, January, and we have. Yes, yeah, we can't wait. On both sides of the tracks due because of the wastewater plant, that skating system hasn't failed half as much as the water system, but. The technology that we're going to get used to is going to help us with the process control and track and everything. Uh, do what is currently there, but um, yes, thank you. Any other question? Yeah. Because of the rain here. Um, the I and I is always an issue, everybody, I mean, it's, it's something unheard of, you know, but that's part of what happened with the. With the ammonia going up at this particular time, as it washed out the um, particular portions of the trickling filters where the snail population grew, because every summer. That grows because it's hot, right? Um, and then that generally slips off normally at a slower rate. And this time it's just all, I mean, so we had to go through that process and get here to be cleaned out and start over basically. And we are, and on the snail thing, we're also working with the state. They came up with some, uh, some, some, yes, and I also know some different things that we can use to mitigate the snail growth over the summertime, so we don't want to get into this next. So hopefully we can get that, that's current ground.
Detail. Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on, under report of city treasurer. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Again, other part, is there any, uh, anyone here which can address? Other than what's on these. Yes, thanks, Mike. Uh, now we go to the report.
There's nothing on that.
Got it. Uh, recommendation department, board committees, we have our fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget. We have a motion by council lapland and by councilman here to appeal to the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget as presented. Well, questions? Let's council please vote. I don't think we would make it out of here.
Yes, one.
My motion carried, the budget is adopted. And now we have our fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six property tax request, uh, resolution twenty three thirteen. Resolution setting the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six property tax request for second. Have a motion by council lapland, who's the whole team to, uh. To resolution twenty. Go ahead. It says that. The tax request will carve the fact rate of being point three four in that resolution, but it should be free. Under section four. Saying that the last. Point three two, but it says in here point three four. Nice catch. Yeah.
So correct it.
Would your, uh, motion include an amendment to correct it?
Well, it's amended before we adopted that. We don't have to, do we, Mike?
Correct it.
Yeah.
Okay. So. We have a motion in the second on corrective president. Now put open. Nice, yes. Thank you.
Yes. Four yes, one absent.
Resolution twenty three fifteen. All right. You see the Don level, overring stable, resolution twenty three fourteen. The, the summary on this camera.
This, this takes a. Reflected two thousand five.
Yeah. Resolution, maybe you'll assume a law, job title, salary name. We have a motion by the councilman, the whole scene is. Resolution twenty three fourteen. There's no further questions, let the council please vote.
Four yes, one absent.
Uh, resolution twenty three fourteen is backwards. And moving on to administration, we have our special fee list, resolution twenty three fifteen.
Yeah, just what, what it's going to be on the, on the proposal, even up on administration and board to work from a hundred to two hundred. For the remaining three summer deposit.
The reason is we are not able to collect. Um, on a lot of final customer, that used to be the hundred dollar deposit covered, their final bill, where two hundred will. Cause a lot of times, okay, we, we bill a, that's in advance, and so. So any, not advance, retro behind. So by the time they get their final bills, some of those are two months' bill. And the hundred dollars, and we're just giving left with more and more receivables that we're running through collection. So this will, will allow for people that are right at that tax. They have to make additional deposits, it's possible for those customers to have up to six.
Yeah, it looks like, um, things are really going down.
You know, we're just taking a name or we're trying, it looks like we're attempting or far in ways or just trying to revisit that and.
Keep your conversation with the member.
Yeah. They're, uh, the chief of weapon.
Yeah.
Move on, okay? Any further comments?
I would introduce this, this one three fifteen and new project. Resolution.
That's actually not the whole title. That's the title of the.
All right, uh, we have a motion by. Councilman D P R and. Seeing that the resolution, a many of the city over there, what, really these, like the properties and airport, so many things on spec, these.
Four yes, one absent.
Resolution twenty three, keep it down. All right, um. Boy, I'm stalking.
One, I do, I think he does it. Certain. So we. Two, three, four. It's. Still thirty six percent below. In this, their market rent. I think I'm still forty five percent below in the city per market rent. Now, if you're going to do the modeling units, that was two thousand and ten, that's gonna be end of twenty twenty four, thirty eight of the unit, eight, three units have been remodeled. That being said, we remodeled one unit in twenty twenty four, since two hundred thirty three, eight, in twenty two thousand nine, for accident. Unit was completely remodeled. And it's frankly for the due account, we. We're using this place for air beneficiaries. We present a federal lock-in shower, reasonable, reasonable accommodation request. Replace three hearing impaired snowplow numbers, wheel over rooms, and laundry rooms, and four, and we are. Our meetings can be monthly on Thursday, and members are the Hoover, the chairman, or eleven years. Moshar Crawford, Puppets, Vice President of the Air Union, the Imperial, resident group, the chair is three months. The one B, four members of the tour years, and Dave Stossinger, and we hope that the two years.
Need it. Appreciate the time, I appreciate the time, just to go through the, but it's. I mean, you're operating on two thing, but it's. So, and it looks good. Sixty then. Always. Those are still back. Uh, third note, comments, questions, uh, moving on, and you're planning and zoning nuisance abatement. For twenty twenty five, O G A, or one five, T I D, zero, five, one, one, five, zero, eight, ten, one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, I don't know them. There's that. You, you are this folks sleeping in the doghouse.
Yes.
And we're down, we're going to listen to the rest of the development district also, this year. Uh, you've all seen this report half a dozen times. Uh, title slide here, vision, values. We continue to do the best. We don't accept. Uh, attend the island for September twenty third this evening. Uh, we have one property for, that is ready for motion to abate, extend funds. It'll be the only property on slideshow. The two other, uh, properties on your agenda are two percent in nuisance, uh, both the properties upset by your municipal ordinance as a bid. Property for motion to abate extend funds is twenty twenty five, O G A zero one five, T I D zero zero five zero one one five zero zero. Physical address is eight, ten, less third street. Uh, this, this property has had some limited progress. Um, since, since April, uh, the initial, uh, letter went out, the courtesy letter went out, uh, noting some banks. Which were leaves after we contacted the property, uh, what remains is four tires. Uh, and they've been there the entire time. Um, they did contact us after what we, they needed to do in order to rectify this. We told them to put the tires in the garage and give them the date they were coming by. Tires are still out there. So at this point, uh, we need a motion to abate fund funds, and we can go and physically move those tires. And yeah, unfortunate, but four times, it's always left in.
It's funny in the process, and no. We spend fun, we spend on building.
Yeah, it, yeah, so, uh, the abates come directly to the city, not part of your contract, the costs are incurred directly by the city. That way, the city then can place a special lien on the property if non-payment is, if you have non-payment by the property, that's all involved. Requirements, just from first and then I am done. But yeah, that way, special lien can be placed if necessary.
But yeah, I knew we.
Yes, assuming, if there's not.
Yeah.
You remember fifteen seventeen. For the winter. Or even a month. It was a while ago.
I can, I can give you an exact, I actually think you want to drive, probably warmer or sunny weather. This, this is my favorite weather.
Yeah.
Once we move forward with the. Yeah, the other. They will, yeah, they'll have initial thirty days plus five days, the five days mandatory requirement. Initial letters went out the end of July.
First, first. So that's the journey, one final thing. To get it done, I'll bring you back to you for, for, uh, resolution to rescind my other two properties. Um, and it will be finished, we will have no properties to evade. Well, from this round, sorry, one of the properties.
Point is, the program's working.
Really is, it's, we'll just, it, you know, hit on the number last time, so I have to adjust in this act. And these are assumptions that you'll make the motion tonight in approval, but as you can see on the very bottom one down there. Um, this will leave one property moved to evade expense funds out of a hundred and thirty five properties. Out of thirty three, try to see what he sent. Um, so the pro, the pro, the program is working, is working very well. And, and to preface that, Kevin and I have been talking, and you guys are all aware of our plan for next year. Uh, and we're, we're going to get the notice out early, and we're going to try and curb some of the excess, uh, that we think is going to be in that. Any question? Come on, bro me. Motion by Councilman here to bait property, bait nuisance property in Westford. No further discussion, please vote.
Four yes, one absent.
Motion carried. Uh, moving on, and we're planning zone, we have nuisance abatement, rescind nuisance for properties, twenty twenty five, OGA, zero one three, PIB, zero zero five, zero zero nine nine, zero zero eight oh seven, West third, resolution twenty three sixteen. And twenty twenty five, OBA, zero two zero, PIB, zero zero five, zero one, three, three, zero zero seven oh three, West, that's resolution twenty three seventeen. Free, you know, state of the affairs. All right. Bringing the cleaver, our recommendation this evening to send.
I wouldn't.
Resolutions of rescinding the clergy. Very second. Have motion by Councilman Lapland, excuse me, have motion by Councilman Lapland, they would help the DPR to rescind clergy. No further discussion, it counts, please vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Four yes.
Resolutions twenty three sixteen and twenty three seventeen are adopted. All right. During the home stretch. For the city attorney. And I report city manager.
I have gas with us, and I was down, but we're working away gas for a while. We discovered that problem. It was supposed to be a new leader had yet to be put on the air, and I said, who, who's going? They were supposed to be on, they're supposed to be on here this week. Uh, apartments are moving along, bringing it on. Was able to do a plumbing electrical, it's like, you know, it's going through good progress. I think they will leave the, the Nebraska Minnesota meeting sometime tomorrow.
In the way of the old apartments can just siding up, so show some progress.
So it doesn't, it's hard.
Now. I didn't. I'd, yeah, I'd keep the, I'd keep the pressure on. Uh, all right. Uh, council members, uh, born of health, we have not had, uh, a meeting, just the last one. I'll study overall community hospital and health foundation. We have, I not met there, but I can tell you the hospital authority has agreed to donate one hundred thousand dollars for funding. So they're pulling a cent for that amount. And, uh, I was all concerned that banner, that banner still costs is bringing in a, uh, new MRI machine itself. Good things happening at the hospital. And that's all I have. Councilman Lapland. They do have. They are. So far. Uh, people. Oh, yes. On the book. Yeah.
We, we, I, I do that, which president, Joe, okay. So we've been being, uh, sort of on a fluid schedule, we get to know each other. Today, uh, we're gonna have a little bit younger board members this year. Uh, and they have some families that they had to take care of, so, uh, meeting times and dates have been hard to sort of narrow down, we are working on doing some scheduling for everyone. Uh, it is difficult, we try and cover the whole region with our board members. So it isn't like they're all wanting to follow, and they just can't even meet whatever. Uh, we met last night, and I'll just give you a brief update, we had a couple of, we really didn't have any accident items that were the necessary to meet. Um, you've been living under a rock, that's okay. Uh, we had a difficult decision to make about pulling some grant writing assistance for a gay, uh, north by, north by based nonprofit. Um, but the big news for last night was, we did, the board did approve, uh, submission of three planning grants for CDPG, uh, for writing comprehensive. So seems to be the niche right now that we're getting a lot of calls about is playgrounds, um, and, and comprehensive plan. So we'll be working with a couple of communities on comprehensive, actually, six total communities next year for rewriting comprehensive plans. One community wants a minutes of review, so, uh, yeah, we're looking forward to that. And then, uh, a couple of USDA grants, uh, we're working with, uh, Arthur, uh, for USDA grant. And the city of Cambridge contacted us about running USDA grant for his five one. So plenty of, plenty of stuff going on. Next week, we will all be ascending our, our mandatory CED administrator training and link. So, uh, yay, no, two, that's in two weeks, two weeks, sorry. Um, it is good stuff, and so research for some of us, and it's an initial search, uh, for one new staff member that we have, so getting everybody on board with the CD, CDPG administrative training is important, because that's a large portion of what we do with our grant. That's really the update, we're actually about the last three months, so, sorry.
Thank you.
Ed, as we look up the ambulance.
Sorry, MS.
When we, when we look at the MS, we talk USDA, we went with them. The North Office. Yeah, they, they pretty much talked it. The museum. Can we re, 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 something? I, I think you should. There's been some, I wouldn't say new developments, but there's been some additional developments in USDA, um, rural facility development, um, that you should, we should talk about.
Okay.
But.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You can send out minutes on stuff.
No, we're, we're not required to do that, or never get the minutes of the perfect. And they're not, they're not, they're not transcript, they're motion by, second by, so you're not gonna gain anything.
Um, on what's simple, we asked the joint council authority, we have not met, I anticipate they'll be in the next month. Shortly. Last night's talk with Kelsey, no bit uncertainty on funding. Memory served me right, they were funded through March, so we're in the, we're very unsure.
Does that mean it's going to disappear?
So they'll have the I will let old ice cap.
Yeah, I, I don't know how many doctors they have in the unit, but there's, there's quite a few, and that's that's gonna, couldn't make a good sized group homeboy.
Or messy.
Yeah. You're, yeah, uh, be on pins on, pins and needles on that, because I'm sure it it will come to the council for some type of action. Thank you. Uh, anything else? Councilman Holstein.
Because I don't make, he's, he's got a beautiful meaning, uh, WRG has not met yet, I anticipate.
Thank you. All right, uh, there's nothing else. And if we have a motion, uh, we have a motion, thank you, my councilman Lapland, good journey. Further discussion, council, please vote.
Four yes.
Very good, gentlemen, thank you very much for your service.